To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Permission of Honeywood School District 171 to maximize student achievement by called safe, critical thinking skills, innovative practices, and collaborative school, home, and community partnership. Roll call.
C Hill?
Present.
Ambrose, present. LaShaw?
Yes.
Thompson?
Here.
Terrell?
Present.
T Hill?
Yes.
Lisa Bell Davis here.
Any person wishing to address the board about an item that is on your agenda should just go over that item and stop for discretion. Visitor statement will be limited to two minutes per person. A total of thirty minutes will be allocated for visitor's comment. All comments about items not on the agenda will be held until the visitor's statement at the end of the meeting. Items related to personnel issues will be redirected to the appropriate administrator. Recommended motion to approve the regular Board of Education meeting of January twenty seven, twenty twenty five, closed session meeting of January twenty seven, twenty twenty five, February expenses, and January payroll in the amount of one million seven hundred fourteen thousand eight hundred fifty-four dollars and fifty cents as presented.
Motion. Second. Motion by Ambrose, second by LaShaw. Ambrose?
Yes.
LaShaw?
Yes.
C Hill?
Yes.
Terrell?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
T Hill?
Yes.
Bell Davis, yes.
Communications, informational items, annual investment report, life safety results report.
We are thrilled to give much accolades to Mr. Schrader and the O B M staff. We have endured at least six audits this school year simultaneously. It's been so much fun. And so, but at the end of it, it's really been so much fun. So, for our life safety report, this is all really good. We scored nine to five, got to a hundred in our life safety report. So, I couldn't be happier with the hard work that our O B M staff and Mr. Schrader gave us.
FOIA requests. So, we have FOIA requests for the Illinois retired teachers association, retirees for this year. This is Kathleen Spat, Mrs. Susan Blady, and Miss Diana Sogato. We're combined. Board reports. Well, while there was audit, the board also gets stereotyped. And unfortunately, we had some members that still have to take their training. So, those that need to take training, if you all could see that that is done ASAP, because we would hate to be over. Can't tell people how to run things when we're not doing what we're supposed to. So, I appreciate it. That is taken into consideration. Administrator reports. Dr. Milhouse?
So, we have our annual five essentials reports. So, we are encouraging our families to please, we beg you to participate in the five essentials. If you have a student that goes to Nathan Hill and a student that goes to Heritage, it is requested that you do it twice. One with Heritage Building, one with Nathan Hill. It's very important, because if we don't get twenty percent of our family to do it in each building, then we don't receive a copy of the report. So, we are asking you, we are off to a very good start. It went active last week, and so far Heritage is at thirteen percent, Nathan Hill is at six percent. But you know, we were always well over hundred percent of our families. So, again, that is our encouragement. You can find the link on our website. Thank you.
Mr. Davis, right here.
Hello. Good evening.
Good evening.
That's okay. I have a lot of voice. So, I just wanted to say, just real briefly on the investment report that you have in front of you, what this is, is this goes through the Bloom Township Treasurer's Office. The Bloom Township Treasurer's Office represents multiple school districts in the South Suburban area. And they take, rather than take your savings or your fund balances and just letting them sit idle? Thank you, Dr. Erica. So, the fund balances for all the school districts, rather than just sitting there and not earning any interest, the Bloom Township Treasurer's Office invests that money. I just want to reassure everybody that there's very, very strict guidelines as to what they can put their money into. Simple, very secure things like certificates of deposit, commercial paper, things that are regulated by the school code. And the Township Treasurer's Office is audited to make sure that they are in compliance with the school code. So, there is unfortunately or unfortunate, there's no Bitcoin in any of the investments that you see before you. But this is the summary of all the investments, and this comes to us annually. There are no surprises, but it is for your information. That is all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Julian Gray?
I have nothing to report tonight.
Ms. Santino?
This is ready to tolerate me. All right, guys. Good day. Good people, how are you? Good. So, we gonna start with athletics, since, you know, we got it all on display. Our seventh grade basketball players play sport in state finals, which is history for Heritage, because it has never had a career. Next year, we're gonna win. But it's a start. So, good job and congratulations to our seventh grade basketball team, as well as the coaches who are former students. And Heritage, they graduated in twenty twenty, and they were the first team to go to state. But it ended up being right around that COVID time, so they didn't get the opportunity. So, it was good for them, because they were actually the first team to go state. But these kids are the first teams to actually play and win. So, good job to them. Trophies are on display. Look, don't touch. We also have three eighth grade boys who have been selected to participate in the all-state junior high class in Lincoln, Illinois, that happened this weekend. So, kudos to track season is beginning, as volleyball season is ending. We had a couple, we had two home games this week for volleyball, and our girls volleyball regional games also begin next week. And they're doing a fantastic job as well. So, kudos to the athletic department and all the great things that's happening over here at Heritage. I wanted to tell you guys about our Black Heritage program. I'm not sure if you got a chance to see it or if you came, but it was amazing. So, we did a wax museum that was a tribute to Black inventors, sciences, activists, servicemen and women, and authors, entrepreneurs, mostly people who we don't get a chance to hear about during our Black History Month. And so, a lot of new names for people, but it was amazing, because the kids had to learn, right? They had to research these people, and they had to embody that for them. So, I'm really, really proud of them standing on the shoulders of giants, which is what they deemed the Black History Program. And so, the ladies, Ms. Smith, our seventh grade science teacher, and her sorority, Delta Sigma Theta, they did a performance for the kids, and the kids are still talking about it. So, it's good to see how they were able to inspire the kids, just to see something bigger than them. So, good job, Ms. Smith, Dr. B, Ms. Wilson, Ms. Peel, Mr. Peebles, and Mr. Black for putting on a fantabulous Black History program. Our last house day was huge. Thank you, Ms. LaShaw, for coming and hanging out with us. Of course, we paused curriculum to work on collaboration and teamwork and building community. Our students and staff put on a talent showcase and performed in front of the entire school. Baby girl over there did a great job. Yes, Tamani, you did amazing. The kids did great. All the kids did great. We are in the middle of getting all that stuff uploaded to our YouTube page, so we can start making sure that the content that's happening is current content. Going forward, though, our student council is hosting games night for this upcoming Friday. They'll be in here and in the gym. And it's kind of like a carnival style thing where they get tickets and prizes. What? You talking to me? I see y'all totally talking to each other while I'm standing here. You know, I see all the things. Anyway, I'm sorry. I digress. So, they're doing the carnival style games night. So, the kids will get prizes based off the raffle tickets and fun stuff. And then on March fourteenth, our student council is hosting the student council workshop for the region. And so, all the schools within our student council region will come to Heritage for their annual workshop, and it's from three to nine P M. And they'll be utilizing the entire school. So, that's really cool. Do you guys have any questions?
So, like, the game night, is that just for the students?
It is for the students. But if you want to come, Ms. LaShaw, you are more than welcome. It starts at three and it ends at five. Okay. Come and play some games with us. Any more questions? Okay, before I leave, I gotta leave with my seven mindsets. Quote, "Anything is possible when you have the right people there to support you." And I just want to say thank you for all of your support.
Ms. Chels, the Kand principal at Nathan Hill School.
Oh, good evening to everyone.
Good evening.
Just want to let you know that our Black History Program will air this Thursday. Once again, the committee has been working very hard. As you know, the fourth graders give their all to this. The choir, which we started a club off of this back together, thanks to the committee, thanks to this lane, and thanks to Mrs. Stradlin. So, you should have a spectacular event that's present. The other piece is, and I'm still asking, the clubs are so very important to us, trying to expose students to as much as we can. You might remember when I had mentioned to you that we started a ukulele club, and it started with six students. We just had our first session today. There are thirty-nine students that want to participate in the ukulele club. The Black History Program is this Thursday. It is five-thirty to seven o'clock. All of them have been fantastic, and we certainly invite you to drop in and join in with us. Have a good night. I'm gonna leave. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ken. Policy committee, second reading, weigh and adopt. Item K, recommended motion to weigh the second reading and adopt the policy listed above.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ambrose, second by LaShaw. Ambrose?
Yes.
LaShaw?
Yes.
C Hill?
Yes.
Terrell?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
T Hill?
Yeah.
Bell Davis, yes.
Item K two, recommend a motion to accept the operational funds balance compliance report as presented.
Motion.
Motion by Ambrose, second by C Hill. Ambrose, yes. C Hill?
Yes.
LaShaw?
Yes.
Terrell?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
T Hill?
Yes.
Bell Davis, yes.
Case three, recommend a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five summer mowing and fertilizing with American lawn as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Round two?
Three.
Three.
Three. We had to do the funds balance.
We just did this.
We just did that.
Also, you did all that. Okay. Okay.
You could, Ms. Davis.
Yeah.
Okay. So, we got Ambrose.
And C. No, Ambrose and C Hill.
No, that was two, but three. We got Ambrose and Terrell.
Okay. Ambrose?
Yes.
Terrell?
Yes.
C Hill?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
T Hill?
Yes.
Bell Davis, yes.
Okay, so case four, recommend a motion to accept the milk contract with Perry Farms for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year as presented. Motion.
Second.
Motion by LaShaw, second by Ambrose. LaShaw?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
C Hill?
Yes.
Terrell?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
T Hill?
Yes.
Bell Davis, yes.
Case five, recommend a motion to adopt the resolution provided for payment of twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five taxes in order to obtain fiscal year twenty twenty-five property tax relief grant as presented. Motion.
Second. Motion by LaShaw, second by Terrell. Ambrose? You all say the same. So, you said?
Oh, that's fine. I didn't hear. That's fine. You think, you think.
I didn't hear. I'm just.
Oh, okay.
I didn't hear.
I heard that one, and I heard yours.
Okay, so we're gonna go with Terrell. That's right. Um, LaShaw?
Yes.
Terrell?
Yes.
C Hill?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
T Hill?
Yes.
Bell Davis, yes.
Case six, recommend a motion to approve the Echo Executive Board of Directors meeting from November nineteenth and January fourteenth, Echo Independent Contractor Agreement with Joe Hoffman, contract as presented. Motion.
Second. Motion, LaShaw, second, Ambrose, LaShaw?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
C Hill?
Yes.
Terrell?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
T Hill?
Yes.
Bell Davis, yes.
Case seven, recommend a motion to approve the contract between Sardi Architectural Group Inc. and W T Group for the proposed Heritage Track as presented. Motion.
Second.
Motion, LaShaw, second, Ambrose, LaShaw?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
C Hill?
Yes.
Terrell?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
T Hill?
Yes.
Bell Davis, yes.
Any visitor's statements?
Hello. My name is Jay Turner. I have a first grade student at Nathan Hill, and I wrote a letter to the board. So, I'll go ahead and read it. I did read that. We only have two minutes, so I can follow through. Okay, so, "Dear school board members, in nineteen fifty-four, the Supreme Court ruled in Brown versus Board of Education that segregation in public schools was unconstitutional. It was a landmark victory for many African-American parents. It was only the beginning of a new battle, preparing their children to walk into classrooms where they would be met with hostility, mistreatment, and exclusion. I can only imagine the conversations those parents had with their children, instructing them to keep their hands down, follow the rules, and never forget that the adults in charge may not have your best interests at heart. Seventy-one years later, I find I find myself having the same conversation with my first grader, not because of segregation, but because of the culture within this school that permits harassment, isolation, antagonization, and bullying at the hand of an educator. My child is being mistreated by his teacher, called a, quote, liar, quote, denied participation in free time with statements like, quote, "because you don't know how to act," quote, and has even had his personal property damaged. Most disturbingly, he was physically grabbed by this teacher, and no one from the school notified me. When I called the school to demand answers, I spoke with both the principal and superintendent. Yet neither could explain what had happened and why my child was handled this way. Their investigation included them asking them asking the only witnesses to the incident, who's your friend, quote, unquote, a question that has absolutely nothing to do with the incident. Upon asking the teacher what happened, her response was, quote, "that she separated the two students," quote, leading me to ask, "How did she separate the students?" quote. Neither the principal nor the superintendent knew the answer because they simply did not ask her. The superintendent called me back, stating that the teacher stated, quote, "she held Logan's hand," quote, but still no answers as to why she or him held his hand. The only solid response was to move him to another classroom, a resolution that had already been given three weeks prior in a previous meeting. This does not address the deeper issue at hand, the unethical behavior of this teacher, and the lack of transparency from the school. Three weeks ago, I requested a meeting after the gym teacher called me with concerns about my child. When I arrived, I discovered a behavior of multiple incidents that I had never been informed about. Despite my clear request that teachers contact me directly if there was any concerns, I was once again left out of the loop when the social worker was called to my child's classroom on February 19, 2025. No one called me. As if this pattern of neglect and mistreatment wasn't troubling enough, my child has expressed statements and mirror retaliation from this teacher as well. He has told me, quote, "I tried to hold my breath until I couldn't while in class with this teacher," quote, and, quote, "the only people in the school who think I can succeed are the STEM music teacher, social worker, and principal," quote. Those are words of a child who feels hopeless, targeted, and unsupportive. I will not allow my child to endure this treatment in silence. Therefore, I am formally demanding the following actions from the school board. A full investigation into the conduct of this teacher, including a written explanation of the February 19, 2025 incident and why it was not informed. A clear disciplinary and accountability plan for addressing this teacher's behavior towards my child. A meeting with the school board, principal, and superintendent intended to discuss long-term solutions to ensure that no child endures this kind of mistreatment again. No parent should have to tell their child to keep their head down and stay silent in the face of injustice. No child should feel unsafe in a classroom. I expect a prompt response from the school board outlining the steps that will be taken to address this issue. Please contact me directly at my phone number and email to arrange a meeting. The school, Nathan Hill Elementary. The student, Logan Turner. The teacher, Jose Gonzalo. With the name of Jay Turner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Sally, would you like to go to the call session?
I'm sorry?
Would you like to go to the call session today? You want to meet with us today?
Yes.
Recommended motion to move to call session.
Motion. Second.
Motion, Ambrose?
Yes.
Second.
We're not going to do anything afterwards, but everyone else is okay to go.
All the favor.
All the favor. All the favor.
All right.